Good evening, folks. I'm going to try this a little different, a little closer. Good evening, folks. It is six o'clock. I called the meeting of the Godly Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and that the notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. At this time, Mr. Brazier, if you could offer an invitation for us, sir.
That's great. Our most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we are so grateful for this evening that this board has decided together here to make decisions in the best interest of the students. And Lord, we're grateful for their passion, their dedication, their sacrifices that they make a time away from their families to serve this community and these students. And Lord, I ask that as we continue through this meeting, that all decisions are made with wisdom and understanding and in accordance with your will. God, we're so grateful for the sacrifice of your son, Jesus Christ, that allowed us to have salvation with you for eternity and glory in Christ. Holy and precious name, not a prayer. Amen.
Thank you. And next, Mr. Flood. You could help us with the pledges. Could have everyone stand?
Yes, sir. We're excited we have two of our student council members here today to raise some pledges. We have the president, Alberto Diaz, and a member, Gabby Webb.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. May we be...
Thank you, both, for your help today. And next, we have the campus spotlight. Mr. Flood?
Well, I'll ask Gabby and Alberto to stay up here with Ms. Davis real fast. We're going to recognize student council, so let the board come shake their hands and say hello to them. Our group tonight that we want to recognize is our student council. Unfortunately, student council students being who they are. Most of them are working or in band rehearsal or in other practices going on all the time because that's what student council does. But we're happy to have two of our members and one of our sponsors, Ms. Davis. So throughout the year, our student council, they plan all of our homecoming festivities that we had a couple of weeks ago. They will plan our red ribbon week here at the high school and the dress up days and activities that go on. They also plan our teacher appreciation at the end of the year. And they do new student breakfasts and hello gatherings for our new students to come on campus every year. So we're really grateful for our student council and all the work they do. And then usually they get rewarded by getting to go to a Ranger game sometime later in the year, along with other leadership activities, like there's a... The officers will get to go to a leadership symposium at the Dallas Mavericks coming up in a little while, so kids can learn about things that happen outside of school as well. So further ado, we have two of our members here tonight, so we want to recognize them. Let them shake your hand and take a photo with them, and then we'll move on with the rest of the spotlight. Well, good evening, board. Thank you all for letting the high school spotlight of some of the things that we do around here and the excitement that we get. It's always an honor to get to talk to you all and highlight and showcase some of the good things and some of the things we're working on throughout the year. Before we start, I do want to recognize the most important people in the room tonight. If you are a staff member of Godly High School, I would like you to please stand so we can recognize you guys. It is an honor for me to get to work with these people. They are the ones that make it happen each and every day in the classrooms. I try to humbly serve them as they do what they do and the great things that they do. So we're going to look at that as we go. As we start, we're going to look at our enrollment growth a little bit over the past five years. So you can see those green cohorts as they go. Probably the most interesting fact this year is this is the first graduating class here in the high school that has well over 200 that we're graduating. Now, this does not include Lynx. Lynx will graduate their fair share, usually around 30 or so students, to get added to this number by the end of the year. But that is the starting class here at Godly High School. So you can see they grow from there, where our freshman class has 273 in it as of last week. So these numbers are just getting bigger. Our overall enrollment right now is 942. And I want to ask Coach Danny Dudgeon to come up and talk about some of the growth from an athletic perspective in UIL realignment and some of the growth he's had in his department.
Good evening. It's a realignment year for athletics, which is a very interesting time. They do this every two years. And so some information for you guys, you can see we have turned in the following numbers. We're 712, 827, and we're going to be right now 942, right around 940 is where we'll turn in the UIL realignment. Some interesting things. That puts us very comfortable in 4-8 for all sports. Football is the one anomaly because they division us in football. The Latin number last time was 956. So we are right on that cusp. And the rumor mill right now is that number may actually drop for the first time since 1990. We'll see when the UIL comes out with that, and it's an important days with that. We'll turn in our enrollment on October 31st to UIL. The enrollment of that name will be what we turn in. And then the first week of December, UIL has actually come out and started helping us. They will release the UIL realignment cutoffs the first week of December, which really helps our coaches start finding schedules and games and that kind of thing. And then the first week of February, they will release the new districts. So it's always an interesting time because everybody's got their opinion of where you're about to go and who you're about to play. And the reality is, is none of us know until UIL hands us that packet, and it's always an invincible day. And so those are kind of some things coming. Some of the growth that has happened with that, we've seen, you know, some easy examples of this. Football in a calendar year, and the high school's gone from 117 playing to 148. So we grew almost 40 kids in a calendar year. Volleyball had over 150 tryouts, 7th through 12th grade, which is an astronomical number when you think about how few play in that sport. We're over 200 boys in the hospital athletic period. We're 239 as of today. The girls are at 144, which are both up significantly from last year. They're both up roughly about 30 to 50 kids. So we're seeing that growth pretty significantly right now on the athletics side, which is a wonderful thing. And we're excited for that growth, but it does come with its fun challenges that come with that. Football-wise, we've been able to carry four schedules at the high school as well as four schedules at the junior high for the first time, I think, ever as well. And volleyball, obviously, I think they could have carried more teams had we been able to find schedules. You just run into a point where nobody has those teams to fill those schedules with. So the growth is fun and good, and it's been very invigorating this year. So any questions? Awesome. Thank you all so much.
Yeah, I'm Brad on Coach Dudgeon. I might be slipping a little, but we're looking for scrimmages next year, and I don't want to travel to Sunnyvale and Graham. So I'm like, can we play closer? And Cleveland and Joshua are really close, but they're like, y'all don't have enough kids. And he told them our numbers, and like, oh, then we will be in touch. We'll see what happens. Because we have enough to play those schools that have bigger ones, which is really exciting to me for a campus of 940 to have enough kids to play schools that have 2,000 and 3,000 is a great job that our coaches are doing to build those programs. In addition, Mr. Walker couldn't be here. They are rehearsing. They have their area marching competition this Saturday. So they're getting ready for their biggest event of the year from the marching competition side. So he's getting ready, but the band is over 100 this year. They have 107 kids in the band this year. Last year, we were around 85 or so. So they've grown quite a bit as well, and they just keep getting bigger because the freshmen are staying in the program as they go. It's an important number to remember because the kids coming up were in elementary school when COVID happened and we took that long break. So we're seeing the last round go through of these kids going through COVID. The other things we're going to look at, we're going to look at our campus signaling a little bit. So I know y'all know C-VAS and our seven pillars. So what you're seeing is, if it's red or yellow, it's something we're going to look at tonight because those are our changes that are occurring. The biggest one is in pillar one, which is student learning in progress. We're going to talk about here in just a minute. And then student readiness for the high school. It's always an important facet for me of what happens after graduation? Are they ready to do whatever's next that they want to do? Because they are 18. It's time for them to make the choice of what they want to do. Pillar four, we also have a massive change this year for our community engagement. We're going to talk about everything in purple, we feel, is stable right now. It doesn't mean it's not something that's perfect. It doesn't mean we don't want to look at it, but it's stable for now. Because we can't affect change in everything all the time. If we tried to change everything all the time, the system would collapse. So we are putting our priorities and emphasis in these areas. The others are stable for now, and then we'll change them as time comes and what happens. So to start with... Oh, that's changing. Okay, so pillar one. So this is a look at from the summer of '24 to the summer of '27 of where we're investing our energies. If it's red, it's a massive change that has occurred. You can see up there that we've had some massive changes last year that we're looking at with deep content. That was a focus on our master scores. Last year, we wanted a 3% growth. We got a 3% growth on the AOC exam in two of the five last year. The other ones all grew, but they grew at 2% and not 3%. So we were happy that we grew in every one of our EOC tests on the master score significantly. We hope to see that growth again this year. Pillar one is question 1.1, basic academic and social skills is what we're targeting this year. And what we're looking at, if you look at... English, for example, so what this is, this is a chart on part of our accountability. So this is closing the gaps. There we go, good. Don't look at math here. So for ELA, you can see here for the past three years, in 2022, we faced a challenge with our ASL scores and our SPED scores. So I got with my English department, and we asked, hey, how do we fix this? What do we do? We instituted a program called ATC, which is answer the question, text evidence to support it, and commentary that you add to the text to justify your answer. It's targeted at short answer response or constructive response. Our teachers implemented it, and since then, these are the interim goals as defined by TEA for meets or master scores. Three means we have met the goal for every target up to 2027. So for the next two years, we're there. Level four is you hit the target for 2037, which is still 10 years down the road. So we have time to work on those. But I am proud to announce that for the past three years, except for last year, we had a little blip, in the four areas that TEA watches most closely, we hit the target goal in meets and masters for ELA for the past three years. So our ELA department is really working hard, and that's not just passing the test, that's meets and master scores. So really, really proud of the hard work our ELA teachers have done. They need those kids to write those ATC answers because it involves a lot of writing and commentary, which is deep thinking. If you look at the next one, this is our master scores. You can see here in 2023, the two says that we had shown growth but hadn't hit the target goal for 2027 yet. And then we've had a slot regression since then. This is part of what leads to our B score at the high school overall and our accountability for closing the gaps. Our closing the gaps is a C in that mark, and so it's one of the target areas we're working on. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Ms. Lori Loomis to come up. She is our math department head. We did the same thing we did with ELA three years ago, a couple of weeks before fall break. We sat down with the math department. We said, how do we fix this? Teachers give us ideas. You're on the front lines, so what do we do? And I'm going to let her report what happens.
Good evening, GIST board, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Lori Loomis, and I'm representing the Godly High School Math Department tonight. The math department is placing a strong focus this year on raising Algebra I EOC scores. After reviewing last year's data and meeting as a team, we identified two key areas that are impacting student performance. A lack of attention to detail and correctly using or interpreting the limited answer tools available on the Algebra I EOC. To address these issues, we've made some targeted changes to our instruction and practice materials. We are now incorporating more assignments that use the same limited tools and question formats found on the EOC, so students become more comfortable and confident using them before testing. As part of this process, we also analyzed individual questions and student responses to determine why certain wrong answers were chosen, especially when a particular incorrect option was selected at a high percentage. This helps us identify common misunderstandings and tailor our instruction to address them directly. Additionally, we encourage... We're encouraging a shift in how students approach their mistakes. Instead of simply checking for the right answer, we're asking students to analyze why is an answer wrong to uncover the misunderstanding or step that led to the error. This reflective approach helps them build stronger reasoning skills and greater accuracy under test conditions. We've also noticed that eliminating phones in the classroom is making a real difference. Students are performing better both academically and mentally. They're no longer frustrated or defensive when asked to put phones or earbuds away because now it's the norm. As a result, they're more focused, more engaged, and more willing to participate in class discussions and activities. This positive change has created a healthier and more productive learning environment. Our goal is not only to improve our Algebra I EOC scores, but to help students become more thoughtful and confident problem solvers. We're excited about the progress we're already seeing and will continue refining our strategies through the year. Thank you for your continued support as we work toward higher achievement in math.
Any questions for math, Rofex? I told Ms. Loomis I would answer for her, so she didn't have to worry. Ms. Loomis has been in Godly and been a pillar of this school for a long, long time. She makes a huge impact on our students every day, and I appreciate the leadership she gives to the math department. She talked about cell phones, so I want to go over some of our survey data we did after the first nine weeks with the staff real fast. So you can see, I've observed less disciplinary issues regarding cell phones. 85% agree. This was out of 41 responses of roughly 60 teachers, 55 teachers on the campus. So over two-thirds of our staff responded to this one, so it's a good sample size. I am able to spend more time on teaching and learning in my classroom. Almost 93% said they can focus on teaching now and not worried about other things. Students tend to be more attentive, engaged. 83% agree. I've seen a positive change in academic learning and engagement. 85% agree. I've seen a positive change in student social interactions at school. 93% agree. I've seen positive changes in student behavior and choices in school. 73% agree. That one's because some kids have found some ways to incorporate other behaviors since they don't have their phone. So they still are teenagers. They still make choices like we all did when we were that age. And then probably one of the coolest things is our failure rates. So overall, we saw a 4% decrease in quarter one as compared to last school year when phones were there. The senior class, from juniors to senior year, had a 6% decrease, which is amazing because senior status begins day one of senior year. It doesn't start later. The juniors had a 2% decrease from sophomore year, and the sophomores had a 4% decrease from freshman year. One of the coolest things that happened, though, is band had, for the first time in Joe Walker's history, 100% of the kids eligible after the first quarter passing all their classes. So it is really, really good. Which also gives us a great chance this Saturday because now they're all there, and they put in all that time and effort, so it's good they get to see the fruits of their hard work. The next area we're going to look at is pillar two. So we have a big change here as well. One of those big changes we've done is Tarleton Today from Hill College. I know we've talked a lot about Hill College in our Go Credit classes. We've gone to Tarleton Today in our US History classes. So I've asked Mr. Jeans, Coach Jeans, to come up. He teaches our US History Tarleton Today class and give a quick synopsis on that.
Thank you. Good evening, board. I want to start with offering praise to the board, to our campus, and to the phones. In my class, I can tell you, the culture is so much different. Kids are talking to each other. Again, they're not just on their cell phones when they get free time. The work itself is better because they're not rushing through it to try to get done, to do things on their phone. So thank you for at least preempting the state. I know the state kind of jumped on it, but I know we were doing the leg before that. So it's been a huge change. I think it's going to serve very well going forward. As far as Tarleton Today goes, I've got a... Mr. Flood approached me last spring about teaching the class. And I have to be honest, I'm a world history nerd. So teaching US History was like, eh, I don't know about that. And I had to stop and think about it. And I said something to him one time. I said that growth happens on the edge of discomfort. And, you know, I didn't want to be a hypocrite, so I said, all right, I'll do it. And so it's actually been pretty special for me because a lot of the kids that are taking this class, which is a college class, were kids that I had in honors world history last year. So I've never been able to do that, teach them as sophomores and then as juniors again. And when they are sophomores, they wrote 12 case studies. So literally, they'd get a case study, and it was about some historical topic. And they really got a chance to dig into concepts and really dig deep into the historiography of how history is kept and misconceptions and things of that nature. And so they took that knowledge, and now they're in a college history class, writing a full-term paper in US History, and they're just blowing out a lot. Like, their college grades are through the roof for the most part. And so that connection has been huge. But I think about it in terms of pillar two and college readiness, like, these kids are getting six hours of college prep. They have the opportunity to. And so the first class, it's in the first semester, is up to reconstruction. And the second class is actually where to start testing. And so to me, what is huge is the ability for me as the teacher and the facilitator. So I co-teach it with Dr. J.U. Anderson at Tarleton, who's an absolute rock star. I mean, really, really good. He's actually laid out the content and fits the teats. So I don't need, I don't have to do a whole lot of legwork to make sure that those things are aligned, they're running very well. And so I get to step back and facilitate the class with the kids. I get, we have two discussions a week. We have a discussion of the lecture, a discussion over the reading. I actually throw in a case study because case studies are kind of my babies, so I throw in a case study when I get a chance. So I handed them a case study on Cherokee Indian removal today, which they kind of like, you know, love-hate relationship with. But kudos to them because they knew I was teaching the class, and they still signed up for the class. So not a ton of them have dropped, but they're still kind of fighting through it. So I think as a relation to pillar one, Tarleton Today has been one of the best things that we could do to get these kids prepared. The class is rigorous. They're having to work their tails off to get it done, and I think they're going to benefit tremendously. Let's talk today, at least US History version. Thank you.
Yeah, Coach Jeans does an amazing job, and those kids have worked hard. A couple of kids did see the workload inside it, just like in college. I might drop down to a different level for how much is going to be there. But appreciate all the hard work he did. He has to go to trainings in the summer. He has to go to trainings during the year with the Tarleton professor. And the Tarleton professor grades all of the work, so the kids do it here. They send it off, and the professor grades and gives feedback. So it's cool that the college grade is so high because that is from the actual professor grading it. It's not graded by us. So really excited with the Tarleton Today program and how that's working. Want to share on Lynx. I know Ms. Swam is back there. We always appreciate Ms. Swam in our Lynx program because they help graduate kids that would otherwise probably drop out. Right now, they're averaging 22 students. So far, we've had six graduate this school year, so really happy for those kids. And then the optional flexible school day that y'all approved a couple of years ago, the kids are really loving because it allows them the freedom to go work or do what they need to do for whatever life is thrown their way. So I want to give a round of applause to Ms. Swam and all the other Lynx employees. And then one of the other focuses we're doing this year, the TSI is becoming more important from state accountability. This is the college entrance exam that the state recognizes. We are aligning it that Ms. Loomis in Algebra II will be testing every Algebra II student. And then every ELA III student, and mostly Ms. Revers' class, will be taking the English version of this test. It will help the kids that if they do want to go to college, they have it out of the way. It's done, it's good for them. If they don't, that's okay, no problem. But the state says this is really the best way that you can be identified as college-ready. In fact, I think I've heard, and Dr. Nate can correct me if so, but they're changing the CC Mar points because one of the statements was, schools are doing too good at it. And so we need to change some things up, and it's like, okay, well, we'll do good at this, too. That's fine. Do what you want to do. We're going to make it happen on the TSI as well. But that's one of our shifts we're making this year in those curriculums. And then the final thing I want to talk about is in pillar four, we have looked at. We're making a huge change in community involvement in the high school as partners and as meaningful partners in the campus. And so we have mentors care. I know we have over 50 mentors lined up. We have 21 students right now that have a mentor on campus. We have twenty-one students right now that have a mentor on campus. It's, it's pulling teeth to get the kid to bring their paper back. Hey, did your mom sign it? Did your zads sign it? Would you bring it back? Would you please get this turned in? Ms. Orangeby, her office is right over there. That's where she meets with the kids. She does an interview with them, make sure she gets to know them. Some of these kids have really difficult stories. But I want to share, right now, we have twelve students being interviewed, so hopefully that number goes up to thirty-two real soon. But we did have a student, he has a really difficult life. Mom is incarcerated. Mom is getting out of jail, and she is trying to get back into his life, and he doesn't really want anything to do with her. He lives with grandparents, but she started just blowing up his phone, texting him like every five minutes, trying to get his attention. Well, he did what a high school kid does that doesn't know how to handle that. He skipped class. He avoided it. However, in the process, he also skipped the time his mentor showed up to meet with him. He has a lot of things. He's got a lot of labels. He's got a lot of labels for sped and other things that happen. I saw genuine concern and frustration when he realized he missed his time with his mentor because that's the one person in his life that's coming up here, that's spending time to help him out. And when he let him down, it mattered for the first time. And we have chased this kid, done all kinds of things, but the mentor made an impact we haven't in two years. So it's impactful. And then the mentor did the best thing that I've ever seen. He came back two days later to make sure he met with him that week to check on him. So the mentors care program is just absolutely outstanding for what's happening here at the high school. For kids that need it, kids you don't think of, kids that want to drop out or don't get involved, they're absent, they're failing. It is working wonders with those kids. So I really appreciate y'all's support in allowing that program to come online this year at the high school. And then finally, always, the best part of the high school is graduation, in my opinion. Everything is geared about graduation. I know we talk a lot about things that happen out there on that field, but the single greatest thing that happens on that field is graduation every single year. And I love it, and I enjoy it, and if it rains, it'll happen in that arena. And that's okay because it'll happen here in Godley, right? And we made that change seven years ago, that we'd graduate from home. And I love it. There's our graduation rates. You can see ninety-seven percent compared to the state's ninety. That ninety-seven is mostly due to Ms. Swam and Lynx. If some of those kids graduated, or it would be lower. And our college and career rate, we're working on that one a little bit with that TSI, but we are just super proud of the kids that graduate. So that'll wrap up our spotlight for tonight. Are there any questions or anything I can answer for you guys?
Thank you, Mr. Flood. Thank you to all of the instructors, teachers, aides, anyone that works here at the high school for being here tonight, and thank you, Mr. Flood, for recognizing the different groups here. Next on the agenda, we'll move to National Principals Month. Dr. Buck?
So it's super exciting for me to be on this side of the recognition this year, my first time. But as a former principal, I know how much time and effort these individuals spend on a daily basis, oftentimes spending more of their energy and effort and worries for other people's children than they do their own and their own family sometimes. So this is a special opportunity. So if our principals will come up to be recognized, this is probably their least favorite thing to do. But we just want to extend a thank you to them as we have Principals Month for the month of October and all the countless hours and efforts and hard work that they put into all the things that they do to make this such a special place for everyone. So we have Stephanie Nguyen is our middle school principal. Jamie Duncan, our principal. Remy Spann, our holding CBA P. Dr. Trumpel is at RBG Elementary. Tracy Green at Pleasant New Elementary. Tom Frazier, Legacy Elementary. And Curtis Flood at Public. I want to give him a big round of applause.
And next, we have Superintendent Report. So we'll start just with a quick, next one, a quick enrollment update. You can see there, we're about one fifty-three, about a hundred and fifty up. I think we enrolled twelve new kids after the fall break, so that, that number, we always, we enroll them and they, they leave. They're kind of back and forth. But we're up about a hundred and fifty kids, and that's definitely still a fast-growth district. Absolutely the fastest growing school in Johnson County. And Coach Gudgeon already handled my next two slides, so you go to the next one there. So if they is in February, we can find that out. And for anybody who likes a little history context, that's the next, yeah, go to next one. It just shows what the numbers done the last couple of times. Like Coach Gudgeon said, it hasn't gone down in a while, so we're hoping it does. And we'll stay where we are for a bit, but that's what we are attendance-wise. Next up would be Mr. Pausik with the transportation update.
All right, good evening. So this week is National School Bus Safety Week, and so we wanted to recognize our transportation department, recognize our amazing drivers who do such a fantastic job of getting our students to and from school and home and do so very well and very safely. And so first of all, the person who's going to do that, so I want to make sure to introduce. This is Jimmy Pausik, James Jimmy Pausik. And so he's our new transportation director, and he's just doing an amazing job. So we're extremely excited to have him, and so we wanted to introduce Jimmy Pausik.
First of all, I'd like to bring up my few transportation department that made it today. Got six or seven drivers here, maybe more than that, eight. I've been here, it's been here these couple of years. To some people, we've been here decades, on decades. We've got past directors. We've got current employees. Self Stacy Block somewhere, she's probably hiding. They're still working. So, you know, these, these people, they work hard every day. They're the first ones to see these students. They're the last ones to see these students. They put a smile on their face. We don't know what these kids go home to sometimes, and they, they do the best they can to make it as good as they can every night. I'm a big firm believer. I fist bump them all the time just to give them a little peck, you know? And I think a lot of the kids like it. But we've got Randy Thomas over here. He's Director of Maintenance. We've got Jay Ryan Welch. He's a, he's just a painter. He, he, he's our funny guy. So he, he likes having a good time. We've got Laura Savage here. She's been with the district for decades. I don't want to say area. Yeah, she's experienced. There we go. Shannon Petty, she's been here for decades, too. She's an old retired teacher. I've got Mona Westerman. She's an old retired director here. I've got Clifford, or, sorry, Clifton. Yeah. So then I've got my Assistant Director, Wendy Taylor. I mean, they've all been here for a long time. Clifton's the newest one. He's been here just about a year, right? I appreciate them all every day. I know it's really hard what they do. They're kind of the, the unforgotten, unforgotten person, you know? But they're there to pump those kids up, get them going today, wake them up, give them...
Will you guys hang on there for a second? Mr. Pausik pulled an audible on us so we could know y'all were coming up here. So let us come down there so we can get a picture with you guys sitting here here. So hold on.
All right, so while we're on transportation, I've just got a little bit of interesting facts for just to let you guys know a little bit beyond. We run twenty-five bus routes every single day, morning and afternoon. All of those routes have a monitor in the, in the afternoon to help maintain the children, except two of those routes. We're still working on a few more monitors. Along our routes, there are forty-five registered sets of people, so we have to make sure we stay far enough away with our stops. They, they update us monthly on that. I actually had a parole officer call me the other day. It gave me a new one. So they just tell us here and there where we check them out ourselves monthly. Of our full-time drivers, I've got ten of them that are full-time employees with the district. So they do their regular jobs here, and then they come help us before route, before school and after school every single day. So I mean, there's a lot of dedicated employees. Of our fleet, got a little quick breakdown. We've got three Suburbans, two Trax, Chevy Trax, three big duly trucks at, at football and baseball. We've got two smaller light buses. We just use the shuttle buses or smaller events like golf, which is, if people go and do it, they can take something smaller. We do have thirty-eight toll buses. Of those thirty-eight buses, nineteen of them do not have seatbelts. So half of our buses have seatbelts, half do not. All the ones that do have seatbelts are on routes. But, so there is a few majority that do not have seatbelts. Retrofiting the seatbelts on those buses is about thirty to forty thousand dollars a bus. So it is a very expensive procedure. It's placing the whole seats, everything. They have to remove the floor. There's a lot of work involved. It's something, it would be almost more beneficial to get a new bus at that rig, in my personal opinion.
So before you move off of seatbelt, for the buses that are used for events like band events or football games or whatever, do we attempt to have a bus use that has seatbelts?
Most of the time, those are not. Because most of the time, they're on already a route, taking the kids home on a regular evening. Because most of the time, that stuff happens in the evenings. If it is something during the day, yes, usually we do try to use the buses with seatbelts to utilize them as much as possible.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
I have one. So to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, since 2019, any new bus purchased was purchased with seatbelts. Is that correct still?
Every bus that we've purchased since 2020, I know for sure, has had seatbelts in it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else for them? Thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Appreciate them. Andy and Oliver drivers doing an amazing job. So Senate Bill 546 going in, so this is connected to the seatbelts. So Senate Bill 546, which the legislature passes a requirement for school buses to have three-point seatbelts. Now, the seatbelt requirement does not apply if the board determines that the district's budget does not permit the district to purchase a bus that has three-point seatbelts or if by doing so, it's retrofitted if it completely warranting it. Now, if the school board determines that the district's budget is insufficient to purchase school buses with three-point seatbelts, the district is required to submit to the TDA and present in a public meeting of the board that includes the number of buses operated, which Jimmy gave us some of those numbers here tonight, by the district that do not have seatbelts, have two-point seatbelts, have three-point seatbelts, and then the estimated cost to the district to equip each bus, which we informed you tonight, that is something between thirty and forty thousand dollars per bus to do them. And so, you know, that a lot of our buses are not worth. The value of the buses, some of those buses are about ten thousand value. So certainly it would be a consideration in making those decisions. So this is information only. We have to, this school year, end of this school year, we have to complete the requirements. So tonight is just information only. Give them this in your hands. So we'll continue following the meeting to give you some more information. Okay, so instead of those nineteen buses, if we retrofit those nineteen buses, we'll do the cost, and then we'll have to make some determinations. And that's the session. So tonight is just information only. Give them the answer. We'll follow up with it. Any questions?
You mentioned a two-point seatbelt or a three-point seatbelt. I mean, I'm assuming that ours are all three. The ones that have seatbelts are three-point seatbelts. None of them have the two-point. They either have the three or don't have them at all. Okay, thank you.
Now, Campus Improvement Plans. Principals. And the Campus Improvement Plans, I know also on the agenda is Campus Signaling, so the Campus Improvement Plans and the Signaling is our work together. We're going to start with middle school and Stephanie Nguyen.
Good evening, Board. So our campus improvement plan, I'm really going to kind of lean on that this evening, if that's okay with you. It does directly align with our signaling as well. But as a campus, we sat down, I started with my instructional leadership team, and we talked about things that were going well, things that needed to be improved upon. We looked at scores. We dug into SARS scores, CBAs, all the things. And we really narrowed it down to three areas that we want to focus on this year. So our first goal is a SMART goal, and it says that for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we will increase the overall student attendance from ninety-four point five two to at least ninety-five point five percent by implementing attendance incentives, parent communication strategies, and early intervention support for students with chronic absences. And we will progress, our progress will be monitored monthly through attendance reports with targeted action steps taken for students showing their greatest need. We have all of it outlined, so there is, there are action steps that follow that as well. And we did that because we can't teach them if they're not there. And I feel like as, not just in Godley I C, but in education across the state, and no one has fully recovered from the attendance hits we took during COVID. And it is time to start bringing that conversation back up and emphasizing, emphasizing the importance of students being in, in school and on campus to learn. And so that's something we're, we're celebrating, and it is working. We've already seen a, a big improvement in that. I know that G6 has a similar focus, and we've kind of aligned in that. We've already started conversations with parents and started meeting with them personally when their students are chronically absent. So that's our first goal. Okay, our second goal, centered around campus culture and climate. And this, this goal was taken from our end-of-year campus survey from last year. And we knew that coming in, we were making some big changes, and that sometimes that can be a strain on a campus. Never our intent. We love our people, but we want that to be even better this year. And so we've been pretty... And so we've been pretty intentional about that. We said by May 2026, Godley Middle School will improve campus culture and climate by increasing the percentage of staff members who agree, who respond, agree, or strongly agree to the following statements. I feel that my school leadership is supportive of my work, and the school's leadership effectively communicates with teachers and staff. And we're going to increase that from 48% to at least 75% in the spring campus climate survey. We started that process actually this fall. We're going to do three surveys throughout the year, and that's across the board. And I have not seen my results yet, but I'm very optimistic. We are off to a really great start this year. So I think that we're going to see big, big gains there. And then our final, and probably most important, where we spent a majority of our work, is by the end of the 25-26 school year, Godley Middle School will increase the overall campus STAR scaled score from a 79 to an 82, as measured by end-of-year TEA accountability data. And this is centered around SMART testing. And it seems strange, I know that that's never been really a big focus in Godley as far as like we're putting all our X in one basket, but we're still not. And if you read our plan with that, you're going to see how day-to-day, week-to-week, we are interviewing with kids, creating quality first-tier plans, and implementing good lesson plans in the classroom to improve student performance. And so each content team sat down and said, how do we want to approach this? And so in addition to that goal at the bottom, all four of our core contents have kind of created their own goals to go along with that. And so they have some ownership in that, got to choose that, and that's been a really exciting thing for our campus this year. Are there any questions? Nothing?
I don't have a question, but I have a kid on your campus. I'm tuned in there, and I've heard good things so far. He's enjoying it, but I've heard good things about the campus culture too.
Oh, good. Thank you for saying that. Okay, if y'all, I have, obviously, do y'all want the full thing? Okay, I'm going to head on down the line and pass them out.
Good evening, Board. So, as you know, we sixth grade are, we're conjoined twins, so to speak, with the middle school. So much of our data is going to be the same as middle school's. Our STAR scores are with theirs, our attendance is with theirs, and so we essentially have the same overarching goals. What you will see is when we start breaking down into the activities and strategies in the future meetings, when we bring that to you, we'll have slightly different activities than they will. For example, as we did last year, our first annual campus clue game increased our attendance by 2.5% in that one week. And so we're doing that again this week, actually. So those kinds of things, we do slightly differently than what they do, but our overarching goals are the same because we're working towards the same STAR goals, and we're working towards the same attendance goals. And since this is the first time in six or eight years, the sixth grade has had the same principal twice. So we're also working on that culture and climate piece. And so we're doing very, very much the same as the middle school, but our activities and strategies will be slightly different, and you'll hear about that as well. So the goals that she just gave you are ours as well.
Okay, so I'm going to have a lot of similar goals to what you just heard, just slightly different. And so we do have a campus climate and culture goal. And we have a whole new administration, and based on the survey results that were taken last May, it's definitely something we need to work on, and we've definitely, we're going to focus on it. So we really want to focus on the idea that our staff feels that the school leadership is supportive of the work that they do, and that they feel supported that we communicate effectively. So there's a lot of things, when we come back to you with our strategies and objectives, there's a lot of things that CBAS-related that we have changed to help increase. I'm excited to see our survey results that we just sent out. I feel overall, it's been a very positive environment, so I'm hoping our staff feels the same. We did a STAR data dive, and based on those, we do have an academic growth goal. So our regardly, we want to demonstrate growth on the state assessment, resulting in a four-point overall increase on the annual accountability rating issued by TEA. We want to increase from a 74 to a 78. And we really want to focus on increasing the number of students who approach meets and masters on STAR. And because it's hard to teach them, like Ms. Wynn said, if they're not in the seats, we do have a attendance goal. So we, okay, so ours is just a little bit different, though. So we want to increase, we're going to do overall, we're going to do an increase of student attendance by 0.5%. So we put a lot of attendance incentives in place. We actually have our very first reward system coming up this Friday for students who had exceptionally well attended during the first quarter. Any questions?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Your campus culture staff survey went out, but the data has not come back yet. Is that, just want to make sure I understood correctly.
Yes, so we sent out, we sent it out right before we went on fall break. And so we should be getting it back, I think, next, tomorrow, tomorrow.
Awesome, thanks.
Again, have kids on your campus, and I've heard great things about the campus culture. So those are the two campuses that I have immediate feedback from, so.
Thanks, I'm excited, thanks.
All right, good evening to our legacy. We also have an academic growth goal. This past school year, we grew on our state accountability rating by six points. So we see no reason we can't grow by another six points and go from a 76 to an 82. And we're going to get to that. We've already started being very intentional with our discussions in our professional learning communities with our teachers. We're looking at data already from last year's STAR test to the MAP test that we took at the beginning of the year, and then we just took our nine weeks quarterly exam, looking at student data, grouping students for tutorials, and getting those conversations started and tutorials happening at Legacy. We also have a campus culture and climate goal, the participation with teachers, but also improving the overall score. And looking at that, part of that is with our community-based accountability in pillar four, we are changing our parents and community outreach. We do this year have a PTO, so super duper pumped about Legacy Parents stepping up and reforming the PTO. They've already done membership drive, they've already done a Fall Fest, which was a huge success. Lots and lots of students came, parents came, had a really good time. They've got lots of events coming up, so we're hoping that that has an impact on our culture as well. And that kind of leads to our attendance goal for, you know, if the students like being at school, then they'll come to school. But we also have little attendance incentives. In fact, a couple of different classes today, Earns and Attendance Reward, and they had a hat day. And then, of course, end of the semester, we'll have a larger party for students that have exceptional attendance. Any questions?
Good evening, everybody, and I'm so glad to be here. The first thing that I want to mention is our, one of our campus goals is very similar to everyone else's in that it is to strengthen staff culture and climate. We have two new--
First, to the general audience, can you announce your campus?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Pleasant View Elementary School, my name is Tracy Green. A little bit nervous. But I did break the ice earlier by stepping on your boots. I'm so sorry. That still not calm my nerves. I think it made it worse than. But, so anyway, our, we have two new administrators at Pleasant View Elementary School, so staff culture and climate is very important to us, and we have very similar goals, very similar details in those goals as the other campuses. Our second goal is to demonstrate growth on the STAR test as well, and we would like to have a six-point overall increase in the annual accountability rating, and increasing from a 74 to 80. And the way that we would like to do that is by focusing on our closing the gaps domain. That's where we are really struggling. And so there are four areas that is going to be our focus, and that is to increase academic achievement, increase the growth rate, student success rate, and English language proficiency. The way that we're doing that is by solidifying our RTI process and providing, we have an ESL paraprofessional that is also going to be supporting us outside of school hours. So we're allocating the time, as soon as those kids hit the ground in the building, we are pulling the kids with the highest needs and providing support with our extra And our third goal is to improve the quality of our tier-one instruction across all grade levels. And in doing this, we, our goal is to have 100% of our classroom teachers participate in at least one professional development that is focused on research-based tier-one instruction, or to go and see other peers that are strong in this area. And I must say, all of these things, for our goal one and goal two, I have to thank our, I have to thank our upper administration. As somebody coming in from the outside, I have not, I have really, really leaned on Mr. Tier and Mr. Carnes, Ms. Block, Ms. Friendsley, all of these people here in order to make these things happen, and I just appreciate them pouring into Pleasant View, and all of our campuses. That's it.
So I'll talk about most of my signaling for the campus improvement plan real fast. Obviously, we talked about the math scores earlier. Our focus is on improving math, and Mr. Lomis did a great job highlighting how we're doing that with question item types and identifying growth points for our students. In the CCMR category, we are trying to keep that around 75 or higher, so we're doing that through the TSI initiative that we're doing in English III and Algebra II that we talked about. We're also looking always at exploring creative ways for our students to get engaged or involved in CTE courses. So if there's new ones that we can offer that kids are excited about, we do that through student course selection and personal graduation plans. So that's goal number two under CCMR. Students tell us what they want to take, and then we try to make it happen for them. Because it's their education, we're trying to figure out what they want to do, so we try to match and align those needs with what they do. I didn't talk about this one a lot in the spotlight, but we are looking at attendance as well, which that's what Mentors Care is targeted at. I also want to brag on Ms. Mack, who's sitting right back there. Ms. Mack has stepped up in her main role at TOSCO. Yeah, give her a round of applause. You know, she came to us from elementary world, so it's been fun. We've been excited to have her, our campus loves her. She's done a wonderful job. Her main focus is attendance at the high school. That has been one of her big rocks that I gave her to go fix it. And she has been having attendance meetings with students that are truant or in danger of becoming truant, and finding all kinds of wonderful things, having parents come in and meet about, you've got to come to school. She has done an excellent job with our new attendance clerk, Ms. Salazar. They have done wonderful work, so we're trying to get that attendance score up to 95% along with Mentors Care. All the kids that are in truancy are being referred to Mentors Care, so they can get a mentor to hopefully come to school more often and be present. So our last one was the attendance strategy, and then we are also aligning with our culture and climate survey that we have put out in accordance with the rest of the district.
Thank you, principals. And then, of course, you guys will get more information as the first reading of campus improvement plans, so you'll get more information to come. So next is construction update. So I wanted to follow up on some discussions that I've had with several of you. We've been discussing the benefits of having an administrative bond oversight advisory committee, and we think it's a great idea. We think it'll help build public trust, we think it'll ensure accountability, promote transparency, because they'll have range of reports, help the public stay informed, strengthen decision-making, encourage efficiency. It'll do a lot of great things for us. And there are a lot of benefits, and I want to thank the board for your direction, so you guys wanted us to put something together, your direction, your input, your feedback, and administration's going forward with the oversight committee. But I just wanted to make sure that this is still something, that this is still your desire, first of all, with this. So that's just what I wanted to check real quick.
Okay.
Well, I was going to ask, as far as that committee goes, we're looking at a broad variety of expertise that would include finance, accounting, and construction management type.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. So we thought we'd pull from really four different groups. The first group we wanted to pull from was from our long-range facilities planning committee, because they're the ones that put the bond together, so they would have the most intimate knowledge of the bond. And all of them contend that they want to, but we'll invite anyone who wants to. Also, the district improvement committee, we thought we would, because they are, they are also involved with the same type of work. That's the second group. The third group is, we wanted to reach out and find some folks that actually didn't support the bond, because we want to get their insight and their viewpoint too, because we're looking for diversity of thoughts and ideas. And then the fourth group would be exactly what you're talking about, construction experience, balance, finance experience, accounting experience, that sort of thing. This one.
Thank you. Would that include a board member or two?
It could, up to three, no more than three.
Okay.
This may be. Sorry for sharing your mic here. Did I miss the amount, the number of people in the committee? I'm okay, because it's really, we're giving them information, and they're just giving us feedback, so I'm okay with a big committee. We really haven't, we haven't put those specifics on it yet, but to me, it can be pretty large if they want to.
Okay, so in terms of the decision-making, decision-making comes from?
The board is still the decision-making body.
So they would advise, the committee would advise the board?
Yes, okay, yes. The committee would advise administration, but we would still, we would run it very similar to a board committee, so we probably thought we'd meet quarterly. The meeting after the bonded advisory committee, we'd let them report to the board. Our have that information on the website, so, you know, everybody could see it. We communicate when those meetings were, and we've found that they are open to the public. We've got nothing to hide, so yes, it would be like a regular committee, yes. I'm seeing nodding heads.
Can you kind of answer my question about how frequent?
Without quarter.
Okay, yeah, I think that's what I was going to say.
When sometimes when we get really, when we're churning with construction, it might be more often than not.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go forward with that.
I just have a question.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, my question was, how soon are you looking to stand up this committee?
We'll know in about two weeks.
And then I also wanted to make a motion to call or have an agenda item added to a special meeting along these same lines to release 100% of the accounting for all 168 million from the 2021 bond and 50 million from the 2015 bond, to show where every dollar was spent. I know we have a wonderful CFO, so this report should be pretty easy to compile, and along these same lines of gaining public trust, I believe that if we show this report for expenditures from 2025, for asking for this 2025 bond, then we would gain more trust showing these accountabilities and expenditures from these past two bonds.
So at this time, again, we're in the middle of superintendent reports, so I think a motion is out of order at this moment.
I believe this motion will align with what he's just said.
Certainly a request for something to be added, a day request at a future point. So I believe a motion is out of order at this moment. We can have one or two things, you have the option of withdrawal, or we can see if there's a second or not. Again, I believe we're out of order with that.
I believe this is in line with what he's talking about, but, so my motion stands.
Okay, have a motion, do we have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, we are here. We will go forward with the committee. Thank you for your feedback.
Okay, on that, though, the committee will be able to review previous costs associated to projects.
Sure, sure, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay, so that would be, I just wanted to make sure--
Sure, yes, so there's--
So similar to what I'm hearing, the request for data, you know, that you're not available.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Advisory committee.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And that could be presented to the board enough?
A slide that, that can address, or I would think that could address the concern that I heard you, uh, express.
I, I believe that if this was put out while you're asking people for bond money, you would more quickly gain public trust, but that's why I made a motion.
Okay, so that's, that's it for Construction Update. And I think the next we've got Sinclair Digital, or is it Dr. Mates? Or is it Marty? Marty, Marty. Oh, network's first, yes, we think. Okay, good evening. And I'm going to apologize ahead of time, I'm fixing to just throw all kinds of information in members at all, but I'll promise there's a reason behind it. It's, it's built up to something. So what I wanted to go over was, we're going to call it our Campus Networks Update. It's kind of just an overview of what networks we have in the campuses here and what they're capable of with comparison to each other. So first off, there we go. First off, let's talk about our copper networks. So initially, I'm going to tell you about our copper networks, and I'm going to talk about fiber optic, and then I'll show you the examples of the networks. So when it comes to the copper networks, some of our oldest networks here didn't even make the chart. They're actually a Category Five networks at 100 meg a bandwidth on it. And probably, well, I'm trying to think of when the original updates came, but at some point, we actually started switching to Cat 5B, which gives us a full gig of bandwidth per drop. And then eventually on our newest buildings, we're putting in Cat 6, Cat 6A, even Cat 7 in a couple of cases, which brings us up to 10 gigs of capability on those. So our newest networks are essentially 1,000 times faster than what we were putting in our oldest networks. Technical difficulties, I can't play these things. Okay, here we go. So here's kind of a breakdown of those speeds to give you a better picture. So originally, you know, way back in the eighties, you had Cat 3 networks, which were essentially only 10 mags per second. In 95 is when we first started putting in our first school networks at 100 mags, and I can get to remember that because I pulled a bunch of that cable myself through these networks. And then later, a little down the line, added in the gigabytes, 10 gig, et cetera. Now let's talk about fiber capabilities. Fiber essentially is what we're using in between our data closets inside the networks, and also what we're using in between our campuses. When it comes down to fiber, fiber is actually about half the size of human hair when you get down and look at the inside of it. And there's two types, there's multimode and single mode. Single mode fiber was made to go super long distances and carry a lot more information. Multimode fiber has shorter difference, distances, but the parts were cheaper back in the day. So we put these networks in, we actually used multimode in a lot of places, and then single mode when we actually had to, to get the long distance. Over time, single mode has dropped drastically in price, where now it kind of makes sense to put single mode everywhere for a reason, so I'll show you here. It all comes back to that bandwidth. Essentially, multimode, the multimode that we have here was what was called O and One multimode, it went between the campuses. It's, uh, it's 62.5 microns, which is, again, smaller than the human hair on that core size, and it just carries flashing light up and down. When you shine light at one end, it pops out the other end, and that's interpreted as the data that comes through. Single mode does the same thing, it's just much, much smaller in the center. Instead of being 62.5 microns, it's 9 microns. And because it's smaller, it essentially is more direct. The fiber itself almost makes like a mirror, so when the light hits it, it bounces inside it, and that gives you the ability to bend the cable. Again, it's, you know, it's thinner than a human hair, so you can twist these fibers, even though they're made of glass, and you shoot the light through it and spit it out on the other end. I'm sorry, geek out about this stuff, it's kind of fun to talk about. But what's really cool about it, let me go to the next one and show you what we've got here. So what's in yellow there is our connections on single mode fiber between the campuses. And what's in orange is our multimode fiber going between them. The only reason we didn't have single mode between all campuses, again, was cost back in the day. We put in the orange to, to keep the cost down when those fibers were put in. When those fibers were put in was back in 1998, actually, the originals. Now that's single mode fiber that's running between the, uh, the sixth grade center and the middle school now, and even up to the high school, that is a 10 gig fiber. Even our multi modes are 10 gig, but we're kind of using a trick to get the multimode to push 10 gig. It doesn't normally carry that kind of bandwidth, we use, uh, we make it happen, basically. Now Pleasant View, on the other hand, Pleasant View is way out there. It does come back to us, that is a one gig connection, but it is single mode, and the only reason it's not pushing 10 gig is because it's not what's called a dark fiber. It doesn't stay in-house the whole way, it actually has to jump through some hogs. So rather than pay quite a bit for the bandwidth going through other people's hands, we're, we're pushing less to get it back to us to keep those costs down. We don't need that bandwidth yet, but we can grow to it, absolutely. The really interesting thing about single mode, even on that fiber that we put in back in 1998, is it can carry almost 23 petabytes of information. They know that because they ran it in the lab and tested it and pushed 23 petabytes, but that wasn't the max capacity. That's simply the amount that we've been able to push single mode to test it to. So it's kind of cool, if you think about it. Odds are, single mode can go much higher than that even, they just haven't been able to build the equipment to push that type of volume. And a petabyte, on the other hand, I know you're probably wondering how big a petabyte is. A petabyte is actually a million billion bytes, essentially. If you were to put one petabyte as just information on a printed page in 10 type font, they estimate it would be somewhere around 500 pages of fully printed information in a second that would flash through there. So it's an incredible amount of information expense, speeds for these things. And we're single mode and carrying, but. Here we go, that's the one I wanted to do. So our single mode, going back to where its connection is, the wild, essentially, the high school, oh, that's our outside, or inside, these are our single mode connections inside that's running in between those, so the wild single mode, and through the high school between all the IDFs, we do have single mode connections combined in all of them. So we're kind of unlimited. What we're limited by there is the hardware that we connect it to pushing information. On the other campuses, you can see inside the older section of the high school, that is O and Three multimode, sixth grade campus, legacy yellows, we put an upgrade on those, oh, I don't remember how long ago, probably eight years ago, it brought them up to the old O and Three. And then there's some original fibers in the middle school that are actually yellow, it's just 62.5 O and One, so it's, it's even maxed out for what it can do. It does one gig, we're getting 10 gigs on those others, they're maxed there. And then we have the single mode just in the wild, and, um, the IDF's running out to certain sections in the high school from that. Now let's talk backwards, going again to the copper. So we've gone through the, the connections in between our closets and the outside. Now this is our distribution cables on the inside, which is the copper to the classrooms. That's going back to in the wild in the high school, where you've got 6A and 6 copper, which we can push 10 gig on that 6A, we can push one gig on the 6. And then when you start dropping down in the middle school, sixth grade, legacy, et cetera, it's 5 and 5E, it tops out at one gig. Most of those are 100 meg cables that are going out to those classrooms, essentially. Now, once upon a time, when we first put in our first voiceover IP phone systems, those phones capped out at 100 meg, so we didn't worry about it. Even if we put a one gig cable on it, the phone was going to slow it down to the desktop to 100 meg, and it wasn't that big a deal. Never had that luxury anymore. We can put out gig phones for, well, the past two cycles of tradeouts if they want gig. So now we're actually limited by the cable in the ceiling going into those rooms. Pleasant View, of course, has 6A too, it's one of the newer buildings that caught up. Now, I know I've come up here before and talked to you about our wireless network and how we've done the upgrades and boost the bandwidth all there. The way that we've been able to do that is by putting in our own copper lines. So we actually did run Cat 6 and 6A copper lines out to the new access points, so it really does have at least one gig, in some cases, it's got 10 gig of bandwidth running at each of those access points. But that's the only upgrades that's been done on those campuses. If you look at the graph there, you can see the capacity for legacy, as an example, there are 624 total drops in legacy. 22 of those are our newer Cat 6 cables that we pulled in ourselves. So there's still 600 drops running within the classrooms that are holding at that 100 meg, it's 100 to a one gig, basically, as an example, between those. But, but that's it, that's the status of our network. Any questions?
I don't think anybody up here is going to give a question.
I have a question, I have a question. Is it common for districts to run, um, school districts to run cable, uh, campuses, across multiple campuses miles apart from each other?
It's actually not. That was one of the things that, uh, what were really, you know, and I worked for a cable and company, we installed this stuff before everyone came to work for God, and that was one of the things that stood out to God, like for me, was God has always been really innovative and thinking ahead. That fiber, again, that we put in, not we, somebody put that in in 1998, I just put the lens on it and made it work. But that fiber is still running between the buildings now. When it was put in back then, that has given us that 10 gig speed that we're actually running between the buildings now, but it is a tired old fiber. It was expected to last around 25 years. Actually, over the fall breaks, squirrels chewed through it, uh, we had to come and repair that. It has seen some things, and it shouldn't have lasted this long, but typically what happens in most school districts, it's like Pleasant View, where they put a connection to the outside, and then they kind of make comb runs through somebody else's hands back to a central campus or someplace, and you pay for less bandwidth. But we do have the advantage where we can close those loops and build something that makes it all internal.
So Marty, have you assessed the, the older campuses that have the Cat 5 cables and what it would take, come up with a cost estimate to, uh, replace that with some of their Cat 7, Cat 8, whatever the choice is at this point in time?
We have looked into the cost of upgrades, and, and odds are, even when it happens, um, in reality, you know, you looked at like the 600 cables in Legacy as an example, the older cables, it wouldn't be a full pull and replace of 600 cables, it would be the portions going to the classrooms where we expect higher bandwidth. There are things like, uh, our security cameras as an example, they're just fine with 100 meg connection too, so it would be, you'd have to tier it out and cut it down. So we have looked into a lot of options on those, and then actually we have someone, a special guest here to talk about a new type of network for that matter, from Sinclair, going into future possibilities, the ability to maybe future proof this even further, so we'll get more than 30 years out of it this time.
Marty, I have a question.
Yes.
Real-world application here. What kind of difficulties are our teachers and students incurring because we might not have the right speeds on some of these cables?
What it runs into is, especially as network needs and bandwidth cuts down, um, in the past, when, when webpages were more static and informational, it was a lot of text and just pictures, those, those lower bandwidth needs kept up just fine. Now that we've moved into not just video, but, but basically high-def video, 4K videos, that takes a ton of bandwidth to clean through on the classrooms. So it's the quality of the work that you get to push up at endpoints that gets impacted. Essentially, in, in our elementary schools, we cannot stream high-def videos simultaneously through every single classroom at once, it would chunk those bandwidth points at a lot of those places. And as that, when you get into the future with even more computational things happening in the cloud, AI tools and whatnot, that tends to be more bandwidth on top of it. So, so we have to do something to kind of address those needs voluntarily.
And you, your expertise, because I'm not an expert in this field, is that we need to address this sooner rather than later? Can you give me a month's or a year's type of situation?
That's, um, definitely sooner than later. What, what would wind up happening if, um, we would almost have to do a piecemeal situation? The, the types of information that's coming out right now is coming to change so rapidly, so fast. Oh, there it is. So you can see either that speeds, and you can see the speed in development, where it's actually talking about 1.6 terabytes of information being pushed over a cable, which will come available toward 2030, sometime in 2028. Well, we are, it's one of those things where, um, if the speed becomes available, the technologies that require those speeds start appearing everywhere, they start pushing that information, and being cut off behind it means you just can't supply it anymore. And that's kind of the spot where that, if you look at our typical speeds on there, it means that a significant portion of our network is stuck somewhere in about 2009.
So when you talk about piecemeal, again, this is definitely not my expertise, but I'm kind of making a correlation to the buses and the seatbelts. It's one of those things like, is it really worth retrofitting a bus for $30,000 to $40,000 to shoot this old bus that is going to have other maintenance issues? And similar to the internet type need, the network needs that we have, it's kind of, if we're piecemealing, it's going to actually be no additional cost to do it that way, and then potentially have to redo it all bit.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's kind of the same application, where we'll have a need of one spot, we'll run special cable just like we did for the access points, and then we'll keep hitting those points. And so it's almost like you're, you're starting a brand-new project over and over and over again, instead of finding something to tackle it all at once and be ready.
Marty, if I'm imagining, um, a, a vision of, of RCT having some AI, um, with classes courses, get very heavy into the AI, are there, are there, um, is there an application example that you would say that would use this 1.6 terabytes that, that you could give? Like, so we have a point of reference for like the real application on how we can get to that?
I would say that the easiest way to picture it right now, um, essentially, we're kind of maxing out some of our capabilities currently, it's when we do our, our live streaming for the football games. When we start pushing those speeds just off of all of the cameras that come into the network, and time it gets into our switcher, we're pushing so much bandwidth that we have to send it off those sections for the video and the audio that hits, because it is so extreme. Just by connecting four cameras and then the, the audio things that come with it, we regularly will fill up one and two gig pipes very easily.
From a technology standpoint, if the live streaming, 4K streaming, that kind of stuff is going to use a lot more than like any kind of AI computing that we could have in multiple classrooms and devices all, all doing at once?
Uh, yeah, um, well, that is one of those, any one session on an AI program, the bandwidth isn't going to be that impressive. If we start getting to where we are putting multiple students all at one time, then we could easily overrun what you see on one streaming, 4K streaming, or something.
That, that's it, that's where I was trying to get to. Okay, thank you.
Is Sinclair Digital, that's a, presents something that could tie all this together?
Absolutely.
Well, let's tee, let's tee him up, sir. May I please talk a little more simply with Marty?
I'm, I'm going to try. Marty did a good job teeing this up, so thank you, Marty. Yeah, so, um, that kind of slides.
Yeah, so that kind of slides. So I'm Matt Congrath with Sinclair Digital. We're a Fort Worth-based technology company and we focus and specialize on powering the edge connectivity for information technology and operational technology networks. And so Marty did a good job explaining how all the evolutions of fiber cable, the evolutions of copper cable, upgrading the network and the challenges associated with that, and it's only gonna get more and more challenging as we move forward. And so the district is faced with challenges, hey, well, how do I keep up with that at the same time without spending too much money? And what it comes down to is we need more data at the edge or more speeds, and then we also need more power to go along with that equipment in the classroom for learning. And so how can you, how can you take a look at that? And so our firm, we've developed a solution that we've deployed at other schools and we've created a demonstration system that we're gonna provide to the Wilds, Continuing Education Center to demonstrate what this is. And so what it is, it is a means of, did I do that? Is that bad, huh? I'll just keep going. So I like to supply and say, hey, at your house, when we were working from home, I'm working from home now, and you start streaming multiple services, things get bogged down. And what it is, is so we want fiber to the home, I'm sure your internet service provider has talked to you about that, fiber to the home, fiber to the home, so you can stream all that content. And so what we're proposing and what we do day to day is we do fiber to the classroom or fiber to the student. And so that way we can give those ultra-fast internet speeds into the classroom and then future-proof the asset which is that building. So one, super fast speeds for the kids today, and then two, protecting the value of that asset over the next fifty years. So if I had to equate it to something, it's like the Chisen Trail except with ten billion miles an hour of speed. So that's your speed limit. So you have lots of room to grow into that. And so this is a demonstration system that we are providing and will deploy with students and staff for Godly. And some of the benefits to the kids is, well, if you were to deploy this at scale, we're just here in the wild, so everyone gets equitable access to the internet. Two, super fast speeds. Three, and I'll talk to it in a second, is that when you deploy a network in this architecture, it's actually less expensive than a traditional network. And so that money can be used for other things that are other ed tech in the classroom. Other benefits are, after day one, because we put the network at the edge or closest to the classroom, as there's a need for more cameras or more indoor quality sensors or any kind of IOT, it is much simpler for Marty's team to in-house pull a new cable that's only thirty feet long instead of a two hundred foot cable down the corridor. So it's future-proofing the network and making it much easier to make changes over the life of the school. So your network is, we call it agile, so it's flexible. Along with that, we give you lots of power. So power is probably the biggest problem that you see along with data speeds is how do we get more power to power things like audiovisual speakers and cameras and wireless access points? And so these edge ideas are how we get lots of power in this space. And there's other benefits too. I'll keep moving along though, because Marty did a good job. Probably my favorite ones are, one, we actually give back space to the school. So when you build out an IT network, you have these closets that just have IT gear in it. So we give you back eighty-five percent of the space. So that space can be used to classrooms, it can be used to store gear, or it can just be savings on when you go to construct a new building, you don't need to construct that space. Quickly, a couple other things is, so all those upgrades, you have to not only upgrade your cable, you have to upgrade your active equipment. And the active equipment, like your network switches, are really expensive. It's probably every five to ten years you do what's called a refresh or a cycle. And that could be a million dollars or more than Marty has to tap into. So when you deploy in this architecture, you actually can double the cycle for the refresh. So your network lives at least twice as long as a traditional architecture. So that means more money for the district to do something else with over the life of that asset. So we're gonna be deploying it along with the students. So it's pretty new what we're doing. And what's exciting about that is there are lots of jobs for people that are doing fiber, fiber optic cabling work, copper cabling work, as well as this new kind of electricity called Class Four Power or Fault Managed Power. So there's lots of opportunities for kids to not just, you know, learn to code, but to actually play with the physical or learn the physical infrastructure because there's jobs out there that they can take advantage of. So we look forward to deploying it in the Wild facility here by December. Any questions?
Executive summary, you're gonna, on a small scale, you're gonna give us some hardware to, to decide on the TV studio, Dr. Nix? And it's gonna blow us away?
Right.
Correct. And then when it comes time to redo our network, we'll use that if we like it, which you're saying, right?
Yeah, like the idea is that, you know, we're doing this to, what we do is radically different from the way that it's done today. And so you kind of have to see it, touch it, feel it, otherwise it doesn't really make a lot of sense. It didn't make sense to me when I first started doing it. And once you experience it, you'll then also see that, hey, is this a better way to do it? But two, we're gonna save money, right? Money on the cost to build and then money to operate the buildings over their lifetime. So everybody wins, you get space back, the kids get really fast internet speeds, and you spend less money over the life of the facilities.
Dr. Nix, would you also like to just visit a little bit about opportunity for our students and programs?
So it's a win-win-win situation for me. Not only is it cost savings, space savings, but our kids win in this situation. They're gonna get to help install this in our building and then they will have an actual network to practice these skills on. So tied to this type of networking is a certification called a Big C certification, which is an additional skill set that makes our students employable straight into the workforce. Matt's been a great resource in helping us connect with that company. They're actually based out of Florida. We can send our teacher to training. It's an upgrade to our current ILE program potentially, or maybe a second pathway in an IT offering where our students can actually graduate and leave straight into the workforce in an emerging field. We used to talk about wanting our students to have future-ready skills. Matt uses a word that we heard at our conference up in Fort Worth a while back. We want our students to have future-proof skills. And the skills that they would learn in a program like this are future-proof past what we can determine in the next five to ten years. So it's a huge win-win-win for us as a district and the biggest one for me is our kids.
Any questions for Dr. Nix or for Matt? Thank you. Okay, thank you guys very much. And that is the end of Superintendent's Board's.
All right, next we will move to public participation. At this time, we extend the opportunity for public participation portion of the meeting in compliance with section five five one dot zero zero seven of Texas Government Code. I have three individuals that have signed up. Public participation provides the general public opportunity to address the board regarding topics listed on the agenda. Persons have already signed up ahead of time. Personal attacks on district employees by name or position or students is not allowed. All participants are expected to speak with respect and civility and maintain a calm professional demeanor. On the expiration of the three minutes, I'll call the next person. And at this time, Ms. Nova Olson signed up to speak on Agenda Item eight A three. And before you start, who's operating the thought force? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Olson.
So we, I have been in front of you, board, for many, many, many times about budgeting, about expenditures, the check register, and here we are again. You guys haven't responded. Nothing has changed. When this, I think to Ms. Lane's point, you guys lose respect and trust in this community when you don't have detailed line item budgets. The one pager is not detailed, by the way. Your check registers aren't detailed, it doesn't say what this expenditure was for. So that is a big concern. And especially when we have a number like over forty-six million in revenue, but almost a hundred and sixteen million dollars in expenditures. That's upside down. How did we get there? What's the facts? We can't know. I can't ever trust you guys if, or the CFO, if none of that information is made public so we can see exactly where it goes, dollar for dollar. That's our money. That's not, that's not Rich Dier's money. That's my money. So I wanna know where it's spent and how it's spent. Right now, you guys are asking the public to potentially have a total debt of almost six hundred and forty-two million dollars. If you divide that by thirty-two hundred students, which I'm being very generous, that's over two hundred thousand dollars per student of debt. Let's not let that sink in. Over two hundred thousand dollars per student. We have the second worst total debt in the county and the worst total tax rate in the county. I wanna know where all this money is going. I wanna know how it's spent, and I wanna know exactly that data, if you're gonna spend my money. If you don't wanna take my taxes, beautiful, do whatever you wanna do. But for right now, if you're taking my money and a lot of it, oh, seven thousand dollars, and that doesn't even, I'm outside, I'm outside of the city. I can't imagine what people in city limits paying ten thousand dollars, some of them, per year. That's obscene. So I'm gonna encourage people to get out and vote, vote against this bond. Means accountability to this district. It sends a message that we're not going to have our money taken forever with no accountability. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Peter, and she's signed up for Agenda Item sixty.
Well, word. Here to talk about construction and the update and kind of also segues with eight three as well. Here again is Ms. Olson, so I'll put it out, you guys are asking for a substantial amount of money. Looking around at what has been done via construction before, recently, the most recent bond, you guys tore down perfectly good tennis courts and rebuilt a new tennis court complex, reconstructed that. How much of that money could have went to go to RB Godly, which was approved in the bond and then cut? You have a beautiful two-story, multiple hundred linear foot breezeway out here, absolutely unnecessary for education. How much of that money could have been used for legacy repairs? You have a TCU-inspired stadium and arena, which is phenomenal, it's great facilities, but a more humble facility, how much more of that money could have been used for the leaky roofs? My children went here in third grade, I have an eighth grader now, the same roof is leaking. Those were approved in the two thousand twenty-one where decisions were made to remove those. You bragged about Dallas Cowboy quality audiovisual equipment for all of your stuff. How much would an adequate audiovisual system for all of your stuff save money to put into the sixth grade campus, which now was cut and you're now asking for more money? March twenty-two, ten months after the last bond was passed, seven thirty AM, when I attended a school board meeting, the superintendent made it clear that the construction costs had ballooned and you guys were thirty-two million dollars over budget. And you had to make decisions on what to cut. Most of this bond is what was the cut before. A three-story, two hundred and thirty student academic facility right behind the visitors' grandstand was cut. The voters had the information in March, voted on the bond in May, August it was removed in your comprehensive plan from Huckabee. There's lots of excuses of why this happened, but there's no solutions on what you're gonna do to prevent that type of failure of money management and construction with this next bond. It's proven that excessive debt and money doesn't equate to academic outcomes because the two most fiscally responsible districts are substantially higher in academic performance than Godly. If this bond is approved, please consider doing better. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Bernie. And she has signed up for Agenda Item six E and eight A three.
I'm not the lead speaker.
Put the mic a little bit closer just so everybody online can hear as well. Thank you.
Okay, so the bond, the budget, you know, the transparency, that, this is what this is about. So they've covered the majority of the asks. I wanna cover the community. I feel like we're trying to progress, we're trying to show that, you know, Godly is one, we are one, but we're not. If you look at social media, everyone attacks people that are just asking for answers, asking for transparency, and it's sad. It really is. I mean, as a parent, as a volunteer coach, I'm gonna invest in my child's future, the future of Godly, but not when it discredits people that are on the board asking questions. We all deserve transparency, right? So why is that hard to do? We teach our children to be transparent, and yet the leaders can't be transparent back? That's not fair. That's unfair. I also email this to all the, it's really, but just, I'm for progress. I'm not for tearing people down to get.
And at this time, we will take a final recess. We will reconvene at seven forty-eight.
All right, the time is 7:49. We will reconvene. At this time, the next agenda item is, we will consider the consent agenda items. We will adjourn the motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Krista and a second by Terry. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a few questions on some items. This will be for Spencer. So on the quarterly investment report, at the top of the statement, it shows a withdrawal of twenty-one million, forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. And I was just curious what that withdrawal was for.
Spencer, is that something you can get now or do we need to get back to Ms. Lane since today? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. So if you look, Ms. Lane, under that category, that's the total of all of the withdrawals in and out. Specifically, under Tech School, how that works is our TEA deposits. That's our depository. So our FSP money and stuff that comes in from the state goes into that depository. And then we take it out and put it into our ACS bank, where all of our checks come through. So when it says withdrawal, we're essentially taking it from that bank and then moving it into our local ACS bank.
Okay, so it's just an in and out?
Yep.
Okay. And then another question is just on a different statement. It was the construction projects fund 619 statement. I saw that there was long-term planning expenses for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And then for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, six thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. It's just labeled long-term planning expense. I was just wondering if you could explain what that is.
So I can look into that and get you those exact numbers, those exact items?
I would. Thank you. And then I also have a question. This is budgetary. There was a criminal complaint that was filed. I, myself, as the board member, am named on it. And it's very important to me to get to the bottom of these allegations since I am named on this complaint. So my question is regarding this complaint for inter-fund transfers. And so this is based on the audit report that was done by our auditors. And it's an inter-fund transfer from debt service fund into the general funds. And the amount is two thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. So my question is, what was that money for?
Is that something we can dig and find as well?
I can answer the question. So specifically against false allegations.
So as far as that goes, we haven't heard anything, so we don't...
Correct. But as it relates to understanding actually how accounting works, the way that the ISD accounting process occurs is we cut checks out of the general fund account. And so when checks were run through the general fund account, but they were for a construction item, we have to make sure that we count for it correctly. And so the way that it's done in school finance is done through fund accounting. And so how it works is you have inter-fund transfers. So when you pay for something out of the general fund, and that's for a construction expense, which is where all of our check stock is, what we have to do is we have to take that money from the construction account and essentially put it into the general fund account as the money was there originally. So it's essentially a wash. It's an in and out instead of having a checking account specifically in the construction account. The checks were being written out of the general operating account, but all of the money was flowing from the construction account.
Okay, because I actually have the page here from the auditor, and it shows, you know, due from fund debt service fund, due to fund general fund, in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And it's my understanding from reading all of this that you're not supposed to move money from the debt service into the general fund. So is there another reason why it would show up on this particular thing? It said, "Notes to the financial statements for the year ending August 31st, 2023." This is from our auditor.
Yeah, so first of all, I wasn't here for that audit in 2022, 2023 year. But specifically how it relates is the only reason that there would be a transfer would be related to the inter-fund transfers associated with the exact event.
Can I lead back up real quick to this criminal complaint, though? Did you say that we're all named?
Yes.
Is it for that transfer that you just mentioned in 2023?
This is for the financial year ending August.
What's that?
She references it in the podcast appearance that she makes, where she makes some accusations.
Well, no, I was just...
I didn't even watch it. I did not make any decisions.
Calm down, calm down.
I will email you.
Calm down, calm down. We have deviated from the question at hand, so let's leave any of the discussion or potential lawsuit out. And it's not on the agenda. Let's focus on the question associated with the consent agenda.
Yes.
It was a criminal complaint. I don't know if the lawsuits... Doesn't matter. That's not applicable. That's not on the agenda. We're going to focus on the consent agenda.
Okay, Spencer, I will email you my questions in regard to just reviewing this. I just want to make sure I am named on this criminal complaint. So I just want to make sure that everything was done properly.
Never heard of it.
I don't think you need to worry about it because there's a ton of...
I've never heard of it.
So we can move on now. Thank you. I'll send you an email.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. And next, we have a second presentation and possible consideration of a Godley I-10 district improvement plan.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to bring to you the second reading and consideration of our 2025, 2026 district improvement plan. This plan is a reflection of the work that we all do day to day across the district. And it can be challenging sometimes to really narrow down the multiple complex systems working across the district. And it's just a handful of goals and objectives. And we're going to do our very best. So our very first goal is our academic goal. Across the district, you've heard us discussing, obviously, STAR is a big piece of the puzzle. And we do want to improve our district rating to a B overall, which would require us increasing from a seventy-seven to an eighty on the overall annual accountability rating. So to do that, we are going to start with our very youngest, which is our pre-K through second graders. We're going to make sure that we are providing early literacy, transitioning students getting into kindergarten, transitioning students from pre-K to kindergarten, and making sure that our students in pre-K through second are showing growth. Last year, we had approximately eighty to eighty-five percent of our students made growth. The short goal is ninety percent of those students to make growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, based on that in-class data. Also, one of the new things we're doing this year is we are using the in-class data to restructure our phonics instruction to ensure that all students are getting the first teach of phonics. And then we're regrouping them to work with a different teacher so that we can give them a remediation or an acceleration to make sure that our foundation is strong in kindergarten and first grade so that we know students are getting all of the phonics instruction they need to be ready to move on. So our early literacy is where everything begins. Our second objective, again, you've heard us talking about the closing the gap component of the state accountability. We want to improve by three points from a seventy-five to a seventy-eight. This is the growth component that we're focused on, on the STAR test. We want to make sure that every student is making progress and no one goes backwards. So just a few things that we've put in place for this year. We did redesign our walkthrough form for this year. We are asking every administrator in the district to be in the classroom daily. I know all of the district administrators, all the campus administrators are in the classroom and doing those walkthroughs. And so we rebuilt our walkthrough form to reflect the high-yield instructional strategies that we want to see and to provide teachers with that feedback loop so they know exactly what the expectations are and make sure that we're all speaking the same language. We had our very first STAT chat, which is our new data talks that we're working into our weekly meetings with administrators. And we calibrated on our walkthrough forms with all of our principals and assistant principals and had great discussion. And I think we're already seeing the progress in the classroom of those walkthrough forms. A few other things that we're focusing on, the use of our Design Days. The district is very generous in providing teachers with one day every month to plan, to look at their data, to dig into their standards, to have professional development. And we did restructure that this year so every principal can be with their teachers, every grade level, instead of having them all at the same time. They're happening throughout the day. We have seen huge growth in that this year. Our principals are really enjoying having that time with their teachers, to look at their standards, to dig into the data, to make those instructional decisions together as an instructional leadership team. And so we are seeing the work that's done on Design Day is then coming back during professional learning communities, and they're having those discussions. And we walk into the rooms and the buildings and we can see the work on the wall with the conversations that happen about data and instruction and what's going to happen next. So it's exciting to see that work continuing. We've also added instructional leadership team data digs with every campus quarterly. We've just completed our very first one with each campus. Legacy was our final one for the first quarter, looking at their data, having discussions about what their goals are, what their plans are. Mr. Carms, Dr. Nix, myself, Dr. Dear, we're all sitting down with the principals and working through exactly what's happening on the campuses, looking at their Friday quick checks and their common assessments and things like that, just to make sure we're hitting all the high points and we have our fingers on the pulse of what's happening on each campus. One of our last pieces under this objective is the implementation of the frontline student analytics. This is a new data dashboard. Dr. Nix and I are meeting weekly. We're working with them to get our data uploaded. And it's going to be a powerful tool that can see trends that we can't see because the magic of technology is happening behind the scenes. But it's already started to show us areas where we need to dig in a little deeper and look at some information and maybe have conversations with campuses about, you know, certain areas. So we're excited to bring that to you once everything's clean. The Skyward Q switch over has been a little bit of a challenge, but we're definitely seeing the benefits of that data dashboard coming in already. And then the last one, I'm actually handing off to Dr. Nix because it is our post-secondary readiness portion. Before you hand off the mic...
Yeah, we have a couple of questions before you move on.
I was just going to ask about the data dashboard. You said you were going to bring it to us when it's clean and ready to be presented. Do we have an idea when that might be?
Our goal is to have a data day with you all, to work with you all on looking at several pieces of the data and digging in. We are hopeful this week that when we meet with them, that it is clean. Everything, they had a big upload this weekend. Things were looking good. So I know Dr. Dear is going to try and get with you all about when we can sit down and have a data training, some time with you all to just dig into data. But we will bring it to you as soon as it's ready. If it's ready next month, you will see it next month because we really want to show you all the great things that it can do.
Thank you.
Is there another question?
She actually was asking the same question I was being asked.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Sorry, I have a quick question on this same thing. So I'm very glad to see the goal of the three-point increase for the literacy and literacy on the TEA accountability. My question is more for the public. Can you just explain what goes into those three data points and what is factored in?
So many things. It is an extremely complex system, and that is why we would like to have some time to sit down and have time to really dig into it. It looks at STAR passage rates. It looks at student growth. It looks at subpopulation groups. It looks at targets. I spent about half a day with the principals going through the information on what the accountability system looks like, digging into that data with them. So there are many, many factors. I don't feel like I could do it justice right this minute, but there are definitely a lot of pieces to the puzzle.
Is it possible to put something together just to put out to the public so that they understand what goes into that and what the district is doing to improve that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So that kind of leads in nicely to my first statement. I'm going to get on just a teeny-tiny little step box right here. Mr. Flood mentioned this earlier, but there was a call with the commissioner about two days after we wrote these goals. And his exact words to us on multiple occasions were that we need a data correction with TCMR across the state, that there are too many schools... That there are too many schools with so many students getting points for CCMR that we need to have a data correction across the state. I'll let you interpret that however you want to. I interpreted it in a way that meant that we were doing too well, and they're going to change the system so that we don't do quite as well. I had this similar conversation with you about three and a half, four years ago when I first came here. The state changed the way that they rolled out industry-based certifications and accountability measures for CCMR at that point because schools were doing too well. So they changed the rules. We're still really successful at what we do and meeting students' needs. So the state's going to change the rules for us again. Those rules were supposed to be published by the end of September. That did not happen. So I will reserve full judgment on the intent of the commissioner's call that day until I see the full rules. Then I will update you on my full opinion at that point. Our goal for CCMR is to increase from 86 to 88%, and again, we're going to continue to meet students' needs, but that might be difficult based on what comes out to us with this update on rulings. The way that we're going to do that, you heard tonight from Coach Tins about Charlton Today and the success that we're having with that program. That moved from 51 enrollments last year to 185 enrollments in Charlton Today program with dual enrollment. It's a hugely successful program. The rigor is 100% there. It is incredibly difficult. We are actually thinking about restricting the number of Charlton Today courses that our students can take at one time because of the load on our students. It is amazing, though, because they can choose to elect to accept that college grade or reject it, depending on how successful they are. And we do love having our own teachers teach those courses.
Can I speak to that for a minute?
Yes.
As a parent with a student in a Charlton Today class, actually multiple, everything you just said is 1,000% true. And it's after raising three children in this district, I am so pleased to see the rigor and the expectations so much higher than what they have been traditionally with our dual credit classes. I love the dual enrollment because that was something that Mr. Flood was always really concerned about is, you know, if kids take this dual credit class and they don't do well, that follows them to college. And they could have a 4.0, but there's still this seed that they had from their sophomore year in high school that keeps, you know, dragging them down. I know that's like an extreme case, but it was true. So when I saw this dual enrollment opportunity come for not only my student, but all of the students, I was really excited to see how it works, and it works really well. And Charlton's been great. And I mean, I honestly have zero negative things to say about the coursework that my senior high school is doing. And it's affordable for our family. She's going to walk out of here with college credits that get her so much further ahead, and she'll probably be able to graduate early if she wants to from college. So anyway, I can't say enough good things about the Charlton Today program.
They're amazing partners, and they are amazing partners for our counselors as well. So it's a win-win-win again in that situation. Another piece of this is to expand CTE opportunities for our students, our career technical education opportunities. You heard from Mr. Sinclair today. It's definitely a possibility and adding that as a program for our IT students. The state has also brought JRTC underneath the CTE umbrella and is now funding those courses, so that's a potential offering. We're also looking at maybe construction trades or another hands-on, blue-collar type program for our students because our welding program is so overrun with students right now. So construction trades is an option there. And then, of course, culinary arts, the wild would be an option as an added program and exploring both interest and industry demand for those kinds of careers. And then the third piece of this is the exploration of virtual schools. So the state released in the Bill 569 over the summer, which allows four public schools to launch virtual schools or hybrid schools within their campuses. So we actually have a small committee internally. Danny Dudgeon, Joe Walker, Mr. Flood, myself, a couple of other people on that committee who are looking at how that impacts athletics, fine arts, UIL. All of those pieces, we're actually taking a trip to Lewisville, who has a virtual school that runs under an old COVID law that they had established and were able to keep open because of that, being grandfathered into that. We actually go and visit with them the end of this month. So we are exploring what that might look like and how that might serve some of our students here in Godley to help meet those CCMR measures, along with the things that Mr. Flood mentioned tonight as far as TSI and those classes. I will now let Dr. Block talk about Goal Two.
All right. Thank you. Goal Two is all about engaging staff in our climate survey. By increasing the number of staff that we hear from, we can better meet their needs, is our premise for this one. This will then lead to higher retention rate, hopefully a happier staff, and ultimately higher quality instruction. Our overall goal is obviously to recruit, select, retain high-quality staff. This year, we will give the survey three times. We just gave our first round right before the fall break. We had about 50% of our staff participate in that survey, so that's a higher number. We had 35% of them last year. And so our goal is to sustain or increase that percent by the end of the year. Sometimes that drops off a little bit when we hit that busier time in the spring, so we'll be working on that. We also streamlined the questions to include campus and district questions. We will be sharing those results with our administrators at our summit meeting tomorrow. And then next Tuesday, they have previously mentioned we have what we call our STAT chats, where we talk about different types of data. That is one of the topics we will dive into. We will be preparing a presentation to show how we're going to go through the district overall data so then the campuses can turn around and do that for their campus, and then how they're going to have feedback, close that feedback loop back to the staff members. But we are diligently looking at that and working through that.
May I ask a quick question about that?
I'm sorry. I hate to interrupt you.
No, it's got to be too bold a question. So what do you think keeps our staff from participating in those surveys? And are they anonymous?
They are most certainly anonymous. We use a completely outsourced, we use a survey like Ian believes. And actually, only we have one IP, so it comes in and comes out through that, doesn't come through us. So it is completely anonymous. I do think breaking that barrier for some is a little bit of a, is a hard, you know, not sure. I think sometimes part of it is, I'm going to do that at the end of today, and then next Monday, the survey window has closed, and oh my gosh, I totally forgot to do it. We do try to send out reminders and such, but I know I do that sometimes, you know, you forget about it. It does go out to the entire staff, anyone employed, not including subs, but we have a kind of a separate metric for them, but our current staff. So there are some employees that we have in our custodial and some of our auxiliary type of positions that maybe don't take the time to go back into it. So those are all the things that we'll be looking for. The main thing that we can get, though, that helps us is we did it by breakdown so we know which campuses or which departments had higher participation than others. So that gives us an idea of ways we can target to try to remind them and get them included moving forward. All right. So the objective two are, we're always looking at innovative ways to present PD, make sure staff has the support they need. So some of the things we have listed on that objective for this year will involve continuing our design days. We're constantly looking at how that needs to evolve and change to meet the needs. Also, all campus administrators attended a leadership summit that was held at our service center. So that was a great opportunity to go and network and learn from them. We do have the data dive sessions that Dr. Pottle talked about leading. And then they also talked about meeting with the campus admin. And then our data sessions, like I talked about, our STAT chat, we have kind of a whole map for the whole school year, what topics and what data will be ready during those meetings that we'll be talking about. And then, of course, we are working on strategies for mini-conferences and how we share the AI tools that they talked about to make sure teachers are prepared for those upcoming things to look for in their classrooms. The final objective is, the primary focus on that is ensuring staff are properly certified. Also, it talks about a stoplight report, so I'll let her touch on that just so you know what that's all about. One of the big goals, I was fortunate last week to get to go to a training at Tasby just specifically for HR. I know that sounds a little geeky for some people, but I was super excited and learned a lot to get to go. I got to meet other HR people. Poor girl over to the right, she'd been in it three weeks. The lady said, "I'm leaving. You're in charge. Here's my papers." So I felt very fortunate for the things that in training. But just all about, you know, making sure that teachers were certified and certified properly is one of the things that the state has as a big focus, which obviously will be a big focus of ours as well. We want to make sure teachers are meeting those goals, and so that's something we'll continue to work on and prepare as we go into the hiring season, which is crazy to think about, but that's not too far down the path. So we'll start looking at ways to be more proactive in the teachers that we hire as well as preparing the ones that we already have. And then the stoplight report that I mentioned is, it's just a report that is shared with myself and with the principals in terms of them kind of giving me an idea of their teaching staff and what needs they may have if they're a teacher that might need a higher level of support or a teacher that's doing very well. So they kind of color code them red, yellow, and green. It doesn't necessarily mean anything. It's not a hidden message. It just makes sure that I'm getting the PD lined up, making sure they have the mentor support, making sure they have the needs that they have and that the principals have, but they need to make sure of that. Classroom teachers being successful as well without us having to consistently sit down and talk through. We do periodic updates to that stoplight.
So Goal Three is creating a safe, secure, supportive learning environment as reflected by students' attendance increasing by 0.5%. We believe that if students feel safe and secure and wanted at school, and they have found a connection to someone at school, then they will come to school more often and more frequently. I think you heard our principals all mention attendance goals, and they all mentioned that if kids aren't in schools in their classrooms, then we can't teach them to the level that we need to. So hopefully, these strategies all support that effort for our campus administration. Objective one is around our counselors. This is a goal that has been in our dip for a while, that our counselors spend 80% of their time with students. And the change here is with our Crosses counselor. So Ms. Fisk has moved into a new role this year and serves as our sixth through 12th grade Crosses counselor and has been a great support, specifically at the high school, in working through some students who are in need and who need some more in-depth counseling. It takes up some time with our counselors. So she's been a great support for them, and our counselors are still tracking their hours and their minutes through the American School Counselor Association's tracking sheet and reporting all of that so that we can track this measure. Objective two is around Sentinel. This is also a compliance component. This is part of Brown Hunt's role and responsibility. This is where we report all of our threat assessment measures to the state as required by the state. Objective three is our parent community engagement, increasing students' connection to somebody in the school. You heard Mr. Flood mention mentors care has been a huge success. We've had several new partners this year, whether it's DT Commercial Roofing, have our drone students fly roofs before and after pictures, and we have a Wildcat wagon that we take around to every campus quarterly to give snacks to our teachers as an appreciation gift. Those are all sponsored by community members, State Farm, Jennifer Haring, Grammy Bank, several others. We've had great partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce. I saw Mr. Don Corley here earlier. The Lions Club actually brought flower pots to our art kids to paint for them to sell, and their flowers sell this past couple of weeks. So all those partnerships are really important to us, and we're always trying to engage more community partners in those types of events for our students. Objective four is the McKinney Vento piece. It is also a required compliance piece of a dip for schools, but this is important to us. We currently have 18 students who qualify as McKinney Vento homeless students. So that just means that they either don't have a roof or regular reliable place to sleep at night. That might be from economic hardship, and they're sleeping in someone else's house or they're living with a grandparent or a friend. So that is a growing concern for our district, and there's still more students out there who have indicated that they might be qualified as McKinney Vento, and so we're researching what that looks like. But we partnered them with resources through food banks, clothing closets, all of those kinds of things to make sure that their physical needs are met, so that they can learn when they come to us during the day. And then Objective Five is an attendance goal specifically around truancy. There's two different kinds of attendance. 90% rule means that students seem to be in attendance for 90% of the school days to earn credit, but there's also a truancy rule where students can be considered truant if they have unexcused absences for more than a certain number of days. So we realigned our truancy policies and procedures and our 90% policies and procedures. We met with all of our campuses and delineated roles. We standardized some letters that would be sent out to parents at 3, 5, 7, 9 days. For some of them, go to 11, 15, and 17 days. Hopefully, we don't get there. But I heard Mr. Flood mention Ms. Mack and her work at the high school. I think she's sent out over 150 letters for attendance at the end of the first six weeks of school. So it's a priority for us. It's something that we're trying to engage our counselors with in finding out the why behind students not attending class. Is it task avoidance? Is there somebody in the class that they don't want to be around? Is it a subject that they don't like? Is there something going on at home? So engaging counselors in to find the root core issue behind the absence is important. And that's happening at our counselors, at our campuses as well. Ms. Bailey Peterson is also helping facilitate all of our elementary truancy and 90% attendance. She's also serving as our district truancy officer. So if we have to refer student support for truancy, she goes with our campus administrators to help streamline that process.
I have a quick question about that. So Skyward, old Skyward, parents used to be able to be notified if their students were tardy or absent. And so that when they got that truancy letter, it wasn't a big surprise. I noticed. I used to get those notifications, and I don't get them anymore if my child is tardy or absent from class. So is that still available through Skyward? Did the change make it to where parents need to go back in and opt in for that?
That's a good question, and we probably do need to send something out to parents so that they know how to opt in to those notifications.
So it is, we have to re-opt in. Is that going to be every year? And if so, could we add it to the student registration aspect? So that, I mean, like, I know I have high school kids, so if she's tardy for four days in a row for first period, I don't know because I work at work and I leave before she does. That's not the case, by the way. I don't want to, like, commitee her name. But I wouldn't know if I left her work before my child left for school that she was missing half her first period every day without those notifications until I get a letter from Ms. Mack, which then can be very upsetting to me as a parent. So what can we do to notify earlier?
That's a great question, and we probably need to do a better job training parents and providing that resource. So I'll go back and dig into that and find out what notification we need to send out to parents through ParentsSquare so that they can go ahead and adjust those settings in Skyward and get those notifications.
That's a great question.
I do know we do get some notifications from ParentsSquare who get those or like the sign-in thing that we do when we sign on to this, like if I sign my kid out and stuff, but we ask them, it's not the same, but some of us do that.
I'll look in that and see what kind of setting we need to adjust or what notifications and events.
Dr. Nix, you set a stat there. Any kind of metric, I'm always writing down kind of a data. You said Ms. Max sent 150 letters out this six weeks. What has to happen for a letter to go out? Can you remind me?
It depends. Certain, each level of 3, 5, 7, 9, 11, 13, 15, 17 days has a different indicator that comes with it. Some of them are principal conferences. Some of them are letters sent home to the parents. Some of them are a conference where the parent actually likes to come to school.
So three days triggers?
Is a bonus, yes.
Of a letter?
Yes.
Okay, that's awesome. All right, thank you.
No, we used to get in our monthly superintendent reports. I remember like Jamie Cobb used to stand up and give us a truancy report or whoever it was at that point in time. So could we start, I don't necessarily think that it should be monthly, but could we start getting attendance and truancy reports periodically as a board so that we can support, yeah, that way we can support administration and principals and teachers and parents in this goal of increasing our attendance. I know we're part of the team, so if we are more informed as a board, it seems like that's such a minute data point, but if we're aware of it, then we can do our part.
It's a great point, and it kind of leads into my last indicator here. No, 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 you're doing great. You're right on track. So frontline student analytics actually has what's called an EWS, an Early Morning Systems Report. It pulls several different data points.
It pulls several different data points and cross-rates preferences them for us. So it pulls grades, we have it set to indicate Ds and Fs, so Fs are 70 below, Ds are 70 to 75. It pulls attendance, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 10, 20 days attendance missed. And it pulls discipline reports and it codes students from zero, one or two points based on a scale of how many of each of those they've had. So the more discipline referrals you have, you might be a zero, one or a two if you have a lot. Attendance, you might be a zero, one or a two if you have a lot of attendance issues. Grade, you might be a zero, one or a two if you have a lot of Ds and Fs on your report cards. Then it takes all of that and it gives us a list of high-risk students with more than five points, medium-risk students, lower students and no-risk students. So within a click of a button, I can click on higher-risk students for legacy elementary and click however many higher-risk students they have and it will populate those three students or those five students. So then principals know immediately which students are high-risk and need a lot of intervention right now based on grades, attendance and discipline. So the goal is to roll that out. Tomorrow we have our administrative meeting. Next week we do survey data and digging into our CBA data from this last round of CBAs. So we'll have climate and academic data dig with our Stat Chat next week. Two weeks after that, we'll dig into EWS, our early warning systems with our principals so that they can see that and have a single click of who their high-risk, who their medium-risk students are and know where to go with the resources and who to refer to mentors care, who to, you know, who are the people that, they already know that this really gives them the facts of are they an academic risk, are they a discipline risk, or are they attendance And I got off track, but I think that is everything under both objective five. This is the second review of the dip. We can entertain a motion or if you would like to hear more, come back in November with additional questions, we could do that too.
I make a motion to approve the Godly ISD District Improvement Plan as presented and recommended.
I have a motion by Krista and a second by Jamie. I guess I would ask the question, is, do you feel we have reviewed adequately or is there a need for us to review one more time? And so we will table for this. I want to ask that question before we ask, is there any further discussion?
Wouldn't that be considered by definition discussion?
Well, okay, you're splitting hairs, but okay, it could be a discussion.
I'm comfortable with the motion.
I think overall what I see here, I'm pretty comfortable with. I mean, I don't know that the review is going to have substantial changes that, so should we, if we're doing it later?
Where I'm coming from, you guys may have reviewed, I have not had the time to review. And also, it's been a while to hear, I mean, anticipating what we do with the team of eight, meaning which we anticipate doing that for our November board meeting. So I get that you're talking about this.
With that information, I'm happy to-
I did have the opportunity to review and learn more about the details before we make a motion.
I was unaware of those details, so I'm happy to retract my motion.
Yeah, okay.
Agreed.
Okay. Very good. Motion is retracted. We'll table until the November board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So speaking of the team of eight, we do need to pick a date for that. The intent would be to hold that prior to the November board meeting again, as I just discussed, learn more about the dashboard, see what's on the agenda, so.
My calendar's on the open, it's off the screen. So.
So put calendars out, so we will get a date. I believe the board meeting is the 17th. Okay. Sorry, November 16th evening. And apologies for the members greatest staff that will not be supporting us. Thank you in advance. All right. So next, the board will, yeah, we will recess to close at 8:30.
07:06, Considered Appointment Specific Occasion for Implementation of Security Personnel Devices.
All right, we are reconvening open at 8:56.
A motion to close. Return.
We are adjourned.